This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good afternoon, everybody. Let us call to order the meeting of the Southampton Select Board for Friday, August 4th at 2:00 P.M. This was a basically Zoom meeting. And so in order to begin, let's say the pledge of allegiance wherever you can. At this point, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you.
Jessica, thanks for joining us. And I'll just let you know we have three of the five Select Board members who have joined so far. Chris Fowles is the Chair of the Select Board. John Lumbra is on his vice chair, and Dan LaValle is also a member of the Select Board. Jennifer Day, our Treasurer Collector is also on, and Bradley Oxen, our Town Accountant. So if you would like to introduce the members of your team?
Awesome. So I am Jessica Manfree for the people I have not met. I'm the Account Executive at Springbrook that handles your account. I have my SVP of Sales, Ryan James, on, and my Solutions Engineer, Jennifer Ramos.
Great.
Perfect.
Hey, everybody. Nice to meet you.
Thanks for joining in. Yeah, so we have basically no other agenda on the meeting today. There's nobody hanging out here for open time for the public and no other business that we're planning to address. So we're going to start right in with the Springbrook presentation. And we appreciate you being here this afternoon and thanks for getting together on a Friday.
Yeah, Fridays are my favorite day because it means a week right around the corner.
Great.
So I'm gonna probably take most of the lead today in talking about this. I'm excited because Jessica asked me to join this call. As she said, my name is Ryan James. I'm the SVP of our sales practice here at Springbrook Software. Been here about nine months, which is not as long as Springbrook and Southampton have been partners. But I'm gonna kind of go through some of the things that we're seeing, not just in our client base, but why the cloud offering that we've been investing heavily in has been adopted as quickly as it has been. Obviously, this is your guys' time as well. I know that there's some questions you're gonna have. So we'll spend the first 15, 20 minutes at a high level talking about what this solution is and then give you time to ask questions. So I think we have about 30 minutes. Is that correct, Ed?
Yeah, that sounds good. I think that's what we were planning on. So yeah, I have a presentation already to the principals, but Select Board was kind of interested to really understand it even better. So we presented some of the details, but it's all much more familiar to you all than it is to us.
Yeah, and we're not gonna go into the details.
An overview would be a good way to introduce them to.
Yeah, we're not gonna go into the nitty gritty details because that would bore all of us probably. But some of the stuff that you want to know, we'll definitely be able to dive into. So just let's talk about what the solution is. If we go to our next slide, so we're looking at the Cirrus platform. This is a cloud-based solution, but it's also, which is different than just cloud delivery, it's a SaaS solution. And so for those of you who don't know the difference, it's not only delivered in the cloud, but in a SaaS platform, it's also updated on a regular basis. It's not like you have one version that's hosted and then a year or two years from now, there's a big update for another version. This is a continual evolution of the software. And as you can see in here, what it incorporates is pretty much everything in the ERP model that most organizations need and want. So it's not an all or nothing. We have a lot of clients who have bits and pieces, and then they add other areas as need be. So it's very flexible in that regard. You see the employees and the citizens. It's built for your employees there at Southampton from a single-source solution, but also on the citizen's side. It's providing your citizens a lot of self-service and automation and online processes that they may or may not have. So that is the solution. We've invested millions of dollars into this. I would say that we have, I mean, Springbrook in general has about over 2,500 public sector clients across the country. And that's all we focus on. We don't do anything but public sector. So that is where our knowledge is at. Of that, I would say about 15% to 20% have already moved into the cloud solution. So it's lots still to go. But as you guys know, public sector tends to be a little bit of a laggard when it comes to new technology. I've been in this space for 15 years myself on the tech side. And so as the adoption rates, we're seeing it pick up drastically now. And that's why I'm excited that Southampton's looking to this too. So let's talk a little bit about the why. I'm gonna go to the next slide. So again, I mentioned this is a cloud-based solution. Ultimately, most organizations are trying to get there for a variety of reasons. One, you're putting manual processes. How much can I get eliminate paper? How much can I eliminate spreadsheets? How much can I do all of this in one system? What does that mean? Well, it enhances all reporting analytics. And we're gonna show you that today, how this can help from a reporting perspective. Your workforce, quite honestly, this is what they expect. I don't know if you guys know this stat, but 50% of the public sector are eligible to retire in the next five to seven years. And so that next generation of employees that are coming in, they're not gonna do things on paper. And if you do give them paper, they're gonna leave shortly thereafter. So how do you provide them the tools that they want as employees? You talk about cybersecurity and ransomware. This is another one that it's kind of fascinating how much the, especially the small public sector organizations are getting targeted in ransomware. I mean, just Google it. I'm not gonna go into the details. But this is again, where going to the cloud and having the type of security that we're providing helps protect you from that. We talked about eliminating the processes. Obviously, we have been partners with you guys for over 10 years now. So our focus on the space and then supporting our clients is, you know, we have a 97-plus retention rate. So I think that speaks for itself. Then obviously, things have to fit in a budget. I know there's other softwares out there. Some of the big ERPs, the SAPs and the Oracles, they're for much larger organizations, but they cost, you pay a lot for those. There's also smaller groups out there who will deliver some functionality, but maybe it's not SaaS. Maybe it's not cloud. Maybe it's not continually improving on an ongoing basis. They could be cheaper, but again, sometimes you get what you pay for. So as we built this, this kind of, you know, talk about the cloud piece, the security I think is one of the biggest ones that I hear because it is a big shift from being apprentice-based on a server. But that means you're getting a lot more additional security that you might not have had. Even with the best IT firm department in the world, you still might not have that type of security. And then the current part of the product, to me, is the biggest one. Like I said, we're pushing out enhancements on a probably twice-a-month basis. And those enhancements, by the way, come from our clients. We have an open forum where our clients can go in and say, hey, it would be great if. And when we start hearing multiple iterations of that, then our product team goes in and builds things up. So you're always getting, and that's why I think having the client base we do and it's the fact it's just public sector means we get a lot of feedback from your peers and your vertical. So you're never stuck in a version. You're always on the latest and greatest, and those updates are just pushy. There's nothing your IT department have to do, which takes some of that lift off of IT who are doing their own thing. So just at a high level, that's where I wanted to kind of start and give you the idea of why we're doing this, why Cirrus has been this big investment. And really, it's the only thing we're selling now. Now, we're supporting our clients. We have clients who are on software, we have hundreds of clients on software. We're gonna support them indefinitely. Like this won't be a forced push at any point. But as we talk to clients more and more about Cirrus, they're like, oh yeah, that's way better. That's what we need to get to anyway. Maybe it's not this year, maybe it's next year, they have to fit it in budgets and stuff. But this is where things are going. So I'm gonna stop because we're gonna go into the demo just to show you kind of, just visually, I'm a visual person, what it looks like.
Right. Could you share your rate, when you started doing this shift to the cloud? And you know, about what percentage of your software clients have already moved that much?
Yeah, so we started, this product started being, was available, that's probably a better way to put it. It was available about 18 to 24 months ago, give or take. Now, we had been moving a lot of people into a hosted solution, which is different than SaaS, but have been hosting for them because they didn't want to have things on their servers anymore. We've been doing that for over a decade. So we have, I would say we have, I couldn't speak to the exact number on the software side, how many are cloud-based, but of our 2,500 clients, I would say there's at least 20 to 25% that are hosted on us and probably about 10% have moved into this kind of migration. So there's, we got a couple hundred of them now moving this way. And we only see, I mean, you can ask my sales team, but as I live, my whole team, I have 10 people that report to me, every quarter, the number's going up. We have more and more migrating every quarter, which is exciting for us. Because honestly, it makes servicing our clients easier as well. We don't have a bunch of people on, you know, more and more solutions. We're able to push the enhancements they want to a bigger group. It's really gonna be helpful down the road too.
Okay, great.
Yeah. All right, so let me, I'm gonna pass over to Jennifer because she's gonna show you basically at a high level what the solution looks like, how we've built this out modularly. I'm gonna be doing a lot of the talking, but she's gonna be clicking and driving. And then we're gonna show you some, just a few of those modules so you can go, all right, you know, if you guys ever wanted to add pieces, they're here. They're built in, it's in one place. If you ever wanted to turn one off, same thing. We have clients that do that sometimes too. So the nice thing about this, again, it's web-based, it's built so that you can integrate with other pieces if you will go kind of best of breed in some areas. But this is the landing page. And what I love about this is that depending on your role and your security, so what you're allowed to see or not see, this can be configured for whoever it is. So if I'm the Finance Director, I'm probably gonna be able to go in and see everything. If I'm doing something in utilities, I'm not gonna see any of the finance stuff perhaps. Or if I'm an employee who's coming in and wanting to use some self-service around payroll or time entry, that's all I'm gonna see. So this is built in that way. And it's also built so that based on what I need, I can start putting in tasks, approvals, workflows, things that I do on a daily basis or weekly basis, it's right there for me based on my job and role. So that's just kind of the very opening page. But then if you look here on the left, you see the modules. And we're not gonna go into all these. We don't have time, and I would personally be bored. But we're gonna go into a few of them. We've got things like, you know, our accounts payable, right? So you can go in right here, the module's on there on the left. You saw that Jennifer had the list. She went into accounts payable. Here's some of those invoices that need to get paid, right? Right there in the same system. You go into something like payroll. Payroll, she needs to go to payroll, she clicks right there. It's not going into different systems. This is all integrated, the data's all together. She can go in and look at checks, she can see time sheets, maybe she's a time sheet approver, where I have people that I have to go and look at their time, I have to approve it. That batch by department can be in here, it can be looked at, it can be approved. So maybe the approver is the department head, and then it has to be approved by payroll, and then it has to be approved by the Finance Director. I don't know how you guys do it. But all of those, all of those levels of approving can be set up and automated in the system. Another area we were gonna, you wanna go, yeah, you wanna click on time sheets there? Jen, if I ever miss something because I just talk too much, you can always jump in over the top and say, hey, Ryan, I remember this piece.
No worries, no worries.
I know you will. I know you're not afraid to do that. This is simple, a simple thing. This is actually newer, that's to talk about those enhancements that come, get pushed out. This product was something our clients kept going, hey, we need to capture time off of paper. So we took some time, we built that. We can build a lot of the rules, your time rules, clock in, clock out, overtime, et cetera. Those can be built into this. And then as an employee, I can go in and I can just, I can either punch in my hours or I can clock in and clock out right here in the system. That time gets captured, rules get applied, and it flows to payroll, which then flows to finance and GLO. So again, same look and feel, wanna have that same kind of familiarity with the system. And then as those enhancements get pushed out, we can do that. Some of these enhancements, by the way, are like time. If you had payroll, we pushed time and it wasn't a cost. So a lot of places, you gotta go buy a time system, right? So it's like some of these things, you just get, and that inherently is why having the SaaS kind of solution is advantageous. Now, other ones, if you wanna add a full module, there would be a cost or something like that. I don't wanna, you know, be too, I don't wanna be deceptive in how I'm presenting this. But a lot of those enhancements can get pushed at just part of the process. Also, I wanna show utility billing. So this is one where we've been putting a lot, I mean, this is where Springbrook started 30 years ago with utility billing and then grew from there. But this is an area that, you know, where you wanna go in, you wanna see the different types of utilities, you can see what usage is, you can see where, if you're connecting with, you know, water meters, et cetera, that can all be here. And even on the backend for your constituents, your residents, they can go in, make their payments, et cetera, and all flows right into the system itself. So really, the point here is to show you kind of the depth and breadth of what the system can do, the flexibility. And like I said, depending on the role and the person who's logging in, they might not even see this stuff because they don't need to. So that is all configured when we implement the software. So just click on the tab on the left really quick again for me, Jennifer, the utility billing. Just, I want you guys to make sure you see, these are some of those areas, some of those main modules that can be added or not depending on an organization that you are. I know I'm saying high level. Hopefully, that's okay because I'm not a utility billing expert, I'm not a payroll expert. But does this, how does this, feedback, thoughts?
How about on the purchase orders? What does that look like?
Sure. What on purchase orders? I mean, it's all right here, like.
Well, just in general.
There's an example, there's an example where a purchase order can be taken, you can build the workflow into it. So if it has to be approved at a certain level, that can be started at one place and then that approval can cascade in the right direction.
So this would just be, somebody would create the purchase order, just any department would go in and just create it in the form that's already built online?
Yep. Yep.
And then back on, I guess it was the cash receipts or whatever you showed up earlier. So when somebody goes out and buys something and comes back with a receipt, do they have to scan it in or how does that happen?
Jennifer?
So cash receipting, this is going to be where you can either import your payments into the system or you can physically put them in one by one or take a payment in.
Take cash receipts, right?
Or if you're using a utility billing, portal, payment, those flow in automatically.
Those would be, okay, I guess I'm.
Yes, they flow in automatically.
Okay. Yeah, the way we're doing things now is obviously so manually where department heads have their budget and they go out and do that and they come back with a receipt to present to the Treasurer and Accountant, right? So that's what, you know, it's that piece of paper where they bought something.
Yeah, you can have it go through the system, you can have it give them certain rules where they can enter them, but they can't close them out, somebody else close them out. So you can control what you want them to have access and what they're able to go ahead and do in the system as well.
Got it, okay.
Let's try and get rid of paper.
Yeah. Well, I think paper and time, I mean, part of our issue is, I think we pick up the same piece of paper at least four times, if not more, you know? So, you know, it's at least four people that have eyes on it and, you know, it's just cumbersome. John's got a question, John?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions on the first part. Can you explain to me what your redundancy system is? And are they, I'm assuming you have more than one location that's keeping all the data? Are they on different continents?
They're not on different continents. Everything's locally, I mean, it's based in the U.S. There is redundancy on the system in case of a crash. I don't know exactly where those areas are, but I think, John, I would be happy to get that information. I have a whole document I can send you around the, not just data security, but redundancy, et cetera, for the client's aspect.
Yeah, I'd be curious to at least confirm that they're in different time zones.
Sure.
You know? And then when you talked about the updates coming through, is staff gonna get like a 24-hour advance notice? Here are the updates, here are the enhancements, here's what you need to know? Or is it just gonna load in the system and they're on their own?
More than a 24 hours. So we make sure that we're communicating, I mean, you think about it, we've got hundreds of clients. If you're gonna push out an enhancement, you gotta make sure they know it's coming. So yes, that type of communication is absolutely pushed out early.
And also, Ryan, just to piggyback off of that, when you log in to the system every morning or whenever they're logging in, they'll have a little notification over to the right as well saying the enhancement's gonna be done on this date at this time.
Perfect, thank you.
Sure. Good question. So the other thing I know that was important, I think Ed, you had asked about like just the reporting aspect. So here's, this is pretty exciting because you may or may not be familiar with a system called Tableau. Tableau is, you know, it's, oh, I got a thumbs up from Dan there. Tableau is kind of the creme de la creme of reporting tools that are out there. What we did is we actually went out and we integrated Tableau across our whole ERP system. So there are literally hundreds of canned reports that have been built out, that can be used, tweaked, adjusted, saved, et cetera. You also have the ability to go in here and build your own report, custom ad hoc reports. And again, what I love is the security level is driven by this too. So you might have a reports guru who knows Tableau inside and out, who builds a report, shares it across certain departments, and those departments, they can only see the information that they're allowed to see. So just, I mean, again, from a reporting perspective, I don't know if you wanna click into one or two, Jen, but some of these, some of these here are gonna be able to show you like some of that detail and it'll give your employees the ability to run these reports, give the board reports, right? You guys may be, maybe it's ledger reports, usage reports, et cetera. On a very, in an easy readable way. I see she's going to the, yeah. Some of the graph, graphically, how it can be built, some of the data can be built in a lot of these ways. And then it can get sliced and diced, right? You can have it based on annual, quarterly, projected, et cetera.
Okay. Ed, going, just any of the Select Board members, John, I have seen your hand, but like Dan or Joy, if you've got any questions, shout out because I'm not necessarily seeing everybody on the screen.
Yeah, so the only question I have, and maybe you've already provided this information, is your pricing model. Is that given to us for review already?
Dan, I'm sorry, I missed where you said, the what model?
Pricing model?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So the pricing, the pricing is, we've already provided to the city. It is a SaaS pricing model, right?
Yep.
And with, you know, for a group like you, we have a migration cost, one-time cost. And then what would be the annual cost from a SaaS, on a SaaS side?
Yep. Okay. Thank you, I'll check that out.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's anything on the report side that you guys have questions about. We just wanted to give you examples of how the reports can be built. We don't need to go in unless you want. We don't need to go in and build out a report. But the idea is that any of the data that's in the ERP, in Cirrus, can get extracted by the Tableau reporting tool. So that you can really, you can cross-department it, you can timeframe it, you can schedule reports. So it's like, I need this report on a monthly basis. I can schedule it and then every, you know, the end of the month, it can be sitting on my, in my inbox, waiting to look at. So, you know, as the board, as you're needing maybe some of this information from some department heads, this is the kind of tool that they're gonna be able to use as well.
Okay. And as the board right now, I think that's probably been one of our frustrations is just the level of reporting we're dealing with right now where we see usually on a monthly basis, we see our income and our revenue in our expenditure report. And, you know, obviously, the revenue, certainly from the state point of view, lags behind, so it's always a challenge. And, you know, at the bottom line, it always looks like we've spent more than we have as resources in hand. So some of us on the board get a little bit nervous about that. So we definitely have been looking for ways to have improved financial report presentation, however that may be. And I realize that reports are only as good as the information that gets in there. But nonetheless, if we had, for example, I don't know, you know, you've got a report and you've got the approved budget in line for, you know, all the departments, for example, and then we're seeing on a monthly basis the amount that's been actually drawn down on that. We, those are ones I would think would be pretty easy to do, right?
Yep, absolutely. As things are approaching a budget, et cetera, yeah, that's, those are the types of things that we hear a lot.
Yeah. So can you explain just, you know, without going into great detail, but other kinds of reports that you've seen other Select Boards, you know, really want to use?
Jen, you do these demos all the time. Like why don't you go, can you just go to the Tableau page?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, it's kind of a loaded question, but.
We've got many, many, many different reports. We steal a lot when it comes to auditors as well, that they'll custom, kind of build out that report for the auditor so that they go ahead and, you know, whenever they need it, they can go ahead and pull it or schedule it, kind of like what Ryan said, right? To be able to be sitting in your inbox. But I mean, the sky is the limit when it comes to reporting in here because you can pull any of the data out of what you guys are currently using in, you know, in Cirrus and build out a report with just the fields that you guys need. Doesn't need, you don't need to have a report with 50 if you're only using three fields.
Yeah. Well, I guess we'd have to figure out how we want to design certain reports. But I know that, you know, there are times that we wanna look at a particular department, for example, because we're concerned that they might be running, running close to their budget. And, you know, we wanna be able to check that sooner rather than later and not wait for a quarterly review or a mid-year review or something like that, so.
Correct. And then you can go ahead and filter by department and pull that one department up and look at all of their budgets, their, you know, what they've used against what they have left as well. So you definitely can do that. And you can pull it at any time you want. You don't have to have it on a schedule. You can go in here and just go ahead and run that report for the date range you're looking for.
Right. And the way I think I just understood you, the department heads then would have access to their own department-level report depending on how we set it up, their own budget, at least their budgeted part. And they could look for any kind of reports that they might want that would help them manage their department.
Correct.
John's got his hand up.
Okay. John, go ahead.
Yeah, Chris, just to follow up on that, I guess, because I imagine a lot of the reports are gonna follow Bradley, at least for the initial startup in that. I'm curious what type of user groups are out there or support mechanisms for the town auditor, town accountant to use? And then my second question, because I'll go back on mute, is could somebody talk about the conversion period of time and how long it would be anticipated from start to finish to flip the systems over?
Yeah, two good questions. So I guess I'll turn over to Bradley on this one. So from a user group, like obviously, when you do a conversion, there's, we're gonna be training you as well on the system because it's a new system as far as reporting. But we also have our services support team that are there for all our clients to help with any of the product as well as user groups that you can access. We also do, at least once a month, we do various trainings that are complementary to our clients on different modules as well. So there is absolutely, you know, a ton of support in making sure you're taking advantage of the system the way you need to. And then as far as the actual conversion process, timeframe-wise, and I don't wanna misspeak, I probably defer to my peer who runs our professional services group. But typically, something like this, what we do is we get in and we see how you're set up today and what that conversion process will look like. What's nice is that we've done a lot of these already and are in the process of doing many, even software to Cirrus right now. So when I say we're doing many, we've got clients who are on other platforms that are moving into Cirrus as well. So I would say, I'd say typically, I don't know, I don't know, I don't wanna give it an exact time, but again, I'm gonna write that down, I'll come back because you wanna know about the system redundancy. And I'll give you a good ballpark estimate of what the migration process looks like.
Is there a particular time of the year that you recommend we start converting if we're going to go into doing this? I mean, is it better to have it ready for the beginning of the fiscal year rather than the middle of a fiscal year?
It doesn't, it doesn't really make a difference. I would say personally, I would say it's more on your peoples, when your people are less busy, I say. I mean, we're always all busy. But, you know, I'd probably stay away from, you know, year-end budget times because that's when there's a lot going on. Beginning of the year is fine, but realistically, we're just transferring data, right? So it's not like there's a, it's not like with payroll, like I used to be part. So it's not like there's a, it's not like with payroll, like with, I, I used to be part ADP. I was a big part of the ADP public sector team for a long time. So I knew that quarterly or end of month, specifically quarterly, was a big time to make the transition, just for the tax, tax reasons. So, but for us, when we're doing migrations with clients, we have, we have clients going live all the time.
Okay. I guess one other one for me too, you know, I think we think of our, our finance team as the treasure collector accountant and the assessors as well. And I guess I'm wondering if there are certain modules that are included in this or what is the interface or what could be the interface with the accessory department?
So here's what's nice about the system. Because it's a web-based system, we have built, I don't know if you're familiar with the term APIs, but we have built APIs which are real-time integrations with, that we can accept from or provide to other systems. So that's the one way, the real-time aspect. The other is, is that the system has the ability to import and export data on a scheduled basis. So we can, we can build that interface to another system. And I, listen, in most ERPs, if they can't interface to multiple systems, they're a bad ERP. So we have clients who have, this is their core. They might have a time system, they might have a public safety system, they might have a tax system, et cetera, where we're just taking the data and we would work, we would vet that out through the implementation process or the migration process. Say, okay, what does that data look like? Where does it need to go? And then we would build that integration, build that integration out for you.
Anybody else out there have?
Question on that, yeah, building out on that, building out on the integration, is that a fee for us?
Yeah. Wait, you say building out the integration, what?
I don't know. So I said building out the integration. So when you're, when you're using the APIs to interface these different, to our different toolsets, is that something that is an extra fee?
Oh, no, no, no. Sorry, you said an extra fee. I'm sorry, you cut out. I said, yeah. No, that's actually just part of what we, we provide. We provide these APIs, yeah.
Yeah, that's the answer I want. Thanks.
Okay. That's a, you're like, no extra fees. No, I don't want to hear that.
And so just to reiterate, in terms of the base product that we're looking at here, what are the modules that are included, just to sum it up?
Jess, I'm gonna let you, what are the ones that we've kind of provided them from a pricing perspective?
Yes. So in the finance suite, that includes accounts payable, bank reconciliation, cash receipts, clearinghouse, extended budgeting and general ledger. And, and finance. Were you guys doing purchase, it's been a while. So were you doing purchase orders?
And we'd also would need the utility billing.
Yeah, but yeah, so, yeah, so that's just, that's what's included in the finance module. So you would like to do purchase orders.
Definitely.
You don't, you don't do it now though. Okay. And then in the utility billing, that's, yeah, utility billings. You already would have cash receipts, so the payments would flow over from, from cash receipts. So utility billings, utility billing. Payroll, I know that there was discussions on that. I think the quote was for payroll, HR and employee self-service that, that you guys were reviewing.
Okay. So payroll is not included in this, is that right?
No, it can be. We've, we've given a quote for that. I just know that you guys, I think you guys were looking at options around payroll as well. So correct. That's ultimately, that's up to you. And then the, the utility billing, then we've got the payments piece too, is right where
Correct. Yes.
Your residents are making their payments online or, I mean, now they can do it via text, they can do it by phone. So there's all of those options too.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Bradley, Jen, anybody? Whoever else is out there, Joy? John?
Yeah.
If not, I guess that probably at least gives us a good overview and answers a few more questions and fills in a little bit of the gaps of understanding perhaps on our part. And so we, thank you for joining in this afternoon on this.
Yeah, I, we're, listen, we're happy to. I know we've been able to demo to different departments. I mean, it's been a few months now. So we're just, we're just anxious to find out kind of what your guys' timeframe is, next steps. Because I'll be honest with you, I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't lying when I said this is something that's growing very quickly and with our clients. And so there's a, there starts becoming a backlog of, hey, we gotta get you, get you, get you ready. So when you're ready to go or you can tell us what your decision timeframe is going to be, the sooner the better, in my opinion.
Yes. Yeah, because I could, I could envision all of a sudden, you know, early, early part of the new year, everybody's deciding that they want to start as of January 1. And even though it is the middle of a fiscal year, but nonetheless to have a complete year of records. And all of a sudden you've got many people demanding the same timeframe and you're really booked to try and fit everybody in. So.
Yeah, it's, it's a little bit of that. It's also, you know, people that are doing things right now, they recognize that it's going to take two or three months, you know, to, to do the process to go live for a certain timeframe. So that the backlog, you know, typically it's four to six weeks before we get process started. Like we'll get you, we'll actually give you some, some documentation or your department's documentation. Hey, we gotta get, make sure we gather this information the right way, et cetera, before we kick things off. So as soon as you, as soon as you as a board, and then obviously with your, your, your employees, you're like, okay, well, it's time. The better we know. I know Jessica bugs Ed probably constantly about this. He's probably tired of the emails saying, hey, what's, what's the latest?
I'm never tired of Jessica's emails.
Ed, she works for me, so I get tired of them. I'll tell you that.
And Ryan, I guess I'm assuming that maybe it's a dumb question. I'm assuming that this would be on a parallel system for a few weeks, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, you'd be continuing doing things off right until we're, until everything's clear, vetted, approved, both sides. And then we would, we would go live. It would not be, yeah.
And then I guess the last one is, given that we really don't have an IT department per se, and Ed has been our sort of in-house IT person. And whatever, what, what is this going to mean in terms of ongoing support and, you know, issues that may come up on a daily basis and all that kind of stuff? So we aren't going to have that, a real person here to manage that for us.
So that's, that's where you're going to get a huge, huge lift by being on the cloud, quite honestly. Because the, the, the IT side is us, right? You're not having to go and have somebody man, manage the servers. You're not having to have someone who up, updates the system. It's all being done on our side. So really the support that you need is when you've got someone who goes, I'm having the trouble adding an account. So they call into our support, our, our support team and they sit there on the phone, they help them with it. It also makes it easier because we can, we can see what's going on and make sure that we're, we're in support of you the right way.
Yeah. And when you, when you do that support, are you able to remote into somebody's computer and see what they're having trouble with?
If they need to, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So a lot, a lot, especially for smaller cities, towns, villages, of, you know, kind of our sweet spot in a lot of ways as a company. This, this kind of cloud solution is inherently advantageous because they don't have a huge IT department to back, to back them up. Or they have one person who's doing 15 projects. And it's like, I don't want to spend time doing this. So.
Got it. Okay.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you.
Well, great. Hey, thanks for giving us a few extra minutes. It was nice meeting you all. I'm glad I got to do that.
Yes, much appreciated.
Thanks for taking the time and joining us. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right. We'll be, we'll follow up with you soon. All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay. South Hampton Knights, hang in there. We've got the next one, Vadar coming in.
Yep.
And I think Steven is going to be joining us. He said he was.
Are you the next, what, the next group in?
Well, let's give him a minute.
Okay.
Who's hanging out there?
Doug from Vadar is hanging out there.
Let's see if we get, well, Stephen maybe still late. Okay. We won't wait for Stephen.
I wish I had a set of yellow suspenders like that.
Watch out what you wish for. All right. Well, we told him 2:45. We'll just give it another minute. You guys pick up.
Oh, that's a safety harness, Ed. And I bet, I bet Chris could probably guess from the pictures they can.
Well, that's good to know. You must have been up on the roof rather than the balcony then.
I was on something.
Funny, you're, you're, you're kind of muffled then. I don't know what the issue is with audio. I hope we're not, are we clear to you?
Yeah, you guys sound great. I, I don't.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine.
I'll try to speak up.
Yeah, I don't know what it is.
Hey, Chris, are we just waiting on the next group?
Yeah, Doug is here. So I think we'll, we told him 2:45, so.
Gotcha. No, I had a quick, I just had a quick question before that started. It, I just, so I get it straight in my mind, your, your intention is for us to do whatever homework we need to do. So we're ready to vote at the next meeting, correct? Or are you thinking this is going to come out a month down the road? When do you want to have the vote?
No, definitely by the end of August, whether it's our second meeting or our third meeting, when we do our upper discussion. But yeah, we got to jump down on this as far as I'm concerned. And I know Bradley and Jen had worked kind of independently, I think, and a little bit together on the, on the matrix that we had asked for. But I don't think, it's set around something today, which I honestly didn't have a chance to, to really digest. So we'll, we'll take a look at that again and just see, I think, you know, the hard part is just kind of understanding the numbers of things. I would assume a lot of the features are going to be somewhat similar, but, you know, trying to figure out what our costs are going to be. Yeah. But I definitely would want to get done, done before the end of August.
And I'm, I've got a, we're setting up a meeting with Jen and I with representatives from Harper's just to get, because we haven't talked directly with them for integrating with either one of these companies.
Okay.
All right. Good. All right. With that, I think we'll let in our next presentation person.
Hi Frank, hi Doug, how are you?
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now. How are you?
Good. How you doing?
Good. We have four of the five members of our select board here. Chris, Chris Fowles is the chair, John Lumbra is the vice chair, and Joy Piper and Dan LaValle are on. Jen Day, our treasure collector, who you know, and Bradley Oxon, our account accountant are also on.
Great.
Thank you for taking the time. We appreciate it.
No, glad to, glad to be here. I appreciate it as well.
Yeah.
So what I had for you folks is just a brief agenda, which I think is going to cover the points of interest that you had requested. So obviously going to do a brief introduction shortly. I was going to just do a very quick executive summary of our company, move into a summary of the product offerings and the integration, segue into some reporting and then talk about implementation, installation and support. Does that, does that sound good, Ed?
Sounds very good.
Okay, great. So thanks so much for having us. In the way of introduction, so I do have Doug Ross on, on the line here with us. Doug is my Massachusetts Business Development Manager and has been with me for the past five years. Doug's been in the industry for almost as long as I have, about 25 years, and originally was, worked with online payments in, in that segment. And my name, as you know, is Frank Natali. I'm the CEO, chairman and co-founder of Vadar Systems. And a little bit about our company, so I'm actually one of four owner founders. There's three other gentlemen that joined me 27 years ago and we're all still active employees in the business. So we did just turn 27 years old last month. I can officially say I've been doing this more than half my life, Ed. So.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you. And the four of us, the four owner founders, we're all still talking to each other and working well together, which, which, which I think is a tribute to, to our perseverance. And as you folks know, we're a municipal financial software provider, so an ERP, financial software provider for towns here in Massachusetts. So as it relates to kind of just some of our demographics, we currently service more than 120 Massachusetts cities and towns. So about a third of the marketplace uses our software. We have, we have more than 2,000 Massachusetts municipal users. And we're spread all across the state. So from the Berkshires all the way down to Cape Cod and the islands. We're headquartered here locally in Massachusetts. We're in Acton, Mass, which is right at the junction of 495 and Route 2. It's next to historic Concord. We have 20 employees. We are all former, excuse me, we're all local folks, Massachusetts residents and taxpayers. I grew up and lived in Stowe, Mass. People would always ask me where I'm from, Stowe, and they'd say, oh, Vermont, no, Stowe, apple orchards and, and golf courses. I'm a UMass guy.
Without the E, that's all.
That's right. Yes, Stowe without the E, that's right. I'm also a UMass guy, UMass grad. I currently live in Worcester. One of the other owner founders, Ted, is also a UMass grad as well, UMass Amherst. So we love it out in your neck of the woods. We both majored in, in political science. Of our 20 employees, we do have several former Massachusetts municipal financial employees on staff. So former collectors, former utility water billers, as well as former accountants and finance directors. So that's been a really, really big part of the growth of our business. And basically, over the last five years or so, you know, we've doubled our client count. So we went from 60 cities and towns up to over 120. And we really specialize in the, what we call the middle market here in Massachusetts. You know, we, we service our clients, you know, budget ranges anywhere from 1 million to 100 million. Okay? Really, you folks are in our sweet spot. Ed, I think you guys were what, about 20 million budget? Do I have that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. Yeah, you know, you're, you're right in our sweet spot. The vast majority of our clients are 10 to 80 million. So, you know, and honestly, that's just what most of, most cities and towns here in Massachusetts are anyways. So another point of interest, and I think is important, is we're the last locally owned and operated company here in Massachusetts that, that does this. As you guys know, Softrite was bought by Springbrook. Springbrook has been sold and bought a few other times. They're, they're a much larger national entity. Data National was bought by WTI, Point was bought by QDS. Munis was bought by Tyler many, many years ago. So we really pride ourselves on being the local option for people with local employees and with local former Massachusetts officials. So of the last five years and, and the new clients we've brought on board, we've converted more than 20 Springbrook Softrite accounts. We've converted more than 20 Point QDS accounts. We've converted more than 10 Tyler Munis and Tyler Unifund accounts. So we really have converted folks from all of the different competitors. We're very familiar with the, you know, competitive information and data, how to handle the files, how to ask for the files. And I think that's important as well. As it relates to our products, we currently manage more than $3 billion, with a B, dollars of Massachusetts municipal financial assets annually within our systems. And that really is comprised of three main suites that we offer, which are cloud-based and fully integrated. The first one is our property tax suite. So all of your taxes, real estate, personal property, motor vehicle, boat excise, delinquent real estate, tax title and the like. We then also have a full-fledged integrated utility billing system. So that's for water, sewer, trash and stormwater. So Ed, I know you'd mentioned about a potential stormwater initiative. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So the great new, I'm sorry?
You cut on real quick.
Yeah. So, you know, I bring that up because again, I think it's important. We do have a few Massachusetts clients that do bill stormwater, okay, in our utility application. Here in Massachusetts and actually all across the country, stormwater is really the up and coming thing, right? I mean, with all these storms that we've been having, with the aging infrastructure, I mean, it is critical all across the country. Now, some areas here are hit harder than others, depending upon your, your demographics and your watersheds and what have you. But actually, I have spoken at several national conferences all across the country as a thought leader on stormwater. Okay. So I spoke at the DCU Center in Worcester for the New England Water Works Association on stormwater billing and, and management and, and field data collection. I've spoken in Ohio. I've spoken down in Pennsylvania. So, so we know stormwater. We know stormwater very, very well. And obviously I think that's a value add that we can, you know, provide to you as far as at least our experience with how these processes unfold, especially from the, the software perspective. The third suite, the third integrated suite then would be our fund accounting system, which is a Umis fund accounting system. So that's your GL, your payables, your treasury module. We have a great budgeting and budget prep module as well for planning next year's budget. I'll talk about that in a second. We also have a full remote department capability. So the system supports full decentralized data entry. And what that really means is that we consider a remote department, anybody outside of finance. And what that really means is that we consider a remote department, anybody outside of finance, right? So the police, the fire, the council on aging, the library, okay, all the stakeholders that need to manage their budgets and obviously process their, their information. Um, as I mentioned, these three suites are fully integrated, they're cloud-based. And basically we can demonstrate, which I believe we did for you, Ed, as well, that we can reduce your duplicate data entry by more than 95%. Okay, so what that means is transactions are entered in one single time or, or pulled into the system one single time and they flow seamlessly from assessing to collections to treasury to accounting. Okay, so we remove a ton of duplicate data entry, which saves you a ton of time, I mean, days or weeks of time potentially. And it also really reduces errors, right? You guys know, the more, the more times you enter a piece of data in, into separate, you know, segments of a system, the, the better, you know, there's a big chance for, for errors. And then the reconciliation of those errors, well, where did it happen? Upstream, downstream, when, where, how? I mean, people spend, you know, hours and hours of time, you know, if they're performing all of this stupid data entry. So, you know, facilitating reconciliation is, is, is another really, really big, big part of this. The final piece, which I know plays in for you guys, is payroll and human resources. That is the one module that we do not directly offer. Uh, we were asked many times over the years to do it. We took a hard look at it. Um, payroll is complicated, super complicated in general, and municipal payroll even more so. And so we do have a formal partnership with a company, uh, Harper's Payroll. They're actually right here in Worcester. I live about five minutes away from them, so I, I have easy access. We've been working with Harper's for more than 25 years and about 100 accounting clients, probably 80 plus of them use Harper's Payroll. Um, Harper's Payroll, it, it's a very slick web-based system, cloud-based system as well. Um, they offer a lot of different modules, you know, I won't speak specifically to, to their offering. And Ed, I think you, I think you're going to be talking to them as well. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, great. Um, you know, one, one piece you might want to focus on with them, which is really, really huge, and that is their employee self-service portal, which allows your employees, okay, in a secure manner to access all their pay history, their paychecks, their pay stubs, their W2s, update their contact information. Um, and again, just alleviates or removes a lot of phone calls to, to, uh, to the payroll people. Just like by having this type of remote integration with remote departments is the same thing. It, it removes a lot of questions, um, a, a lot of phone calls. And so the remote department piece, which is really, really, um, important and works really well. We've had that in place for more than 20 years. Like I say, it's fully decentralized data entry. Um, we have basically account level security, okay? So each department or each user for that matter is assigned, not even by department, but by account, okay? Because a lot of towns may have an admin that does data entry for multiple departments, you know, maybe does, uh, for the selectmen, for the council on aging, for the library. But that user can be assigned just very specifically what accounts they can see, post to or read only or report on. So I, so I like to explain it, you know, in, in this way, police can only see police's accounts, fire can only see fire accounts, right? Selectmen can see whatever accounts are, are given to you, administrator, the same thing. And really what this allows the departments to do is really three, you know, very, very important things. And that is it allows them first and foremost in real time to run their own department level budget to actual reporting, right? They can see only their budget accounts. They can see what's been posted. They can see what the original budget amount was, how much has been paid and what's outstanding, okay? They can also do drill down into specific account histories at a transaction level. The second piece is they can do vendor lookups and, and vendor histories. So that when vendors call into them, say, hey, did you pay my invoice or this invoice is still outstanding? Again, they don't need to be calling finance, right? Asking about, you know, how much do I have left in my budget? Did you pay Vadar? What warrant was it on? So they have access to all of that. And then the third piece as well, which is really important, is remote receipt entry. So that allows again, other departments such as, you know, the town clerk, if the town clerk is taking in fees, the building inspection department is taking in fees. They can enter their receipts themselves directly that then all get combined and pushed into finance into the treasurer for, for their review and, and pushover, um, to, uh, accounting. As it relates to kind of how the larger integration works here, uh, we do work already with your vendors and worked with them for a very long time. So you use Vision appraisal on, on assessing. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, of our hundred, rough amount, 100 tax accounts, property tax accounts, probably 70 of them use Vision. Okay, so we have a Vision data bridge, which accepts their standard export files and allows the assessor then to electronically pull those files into the Vadar data bridge area. Data bridge is huge. It allows the assessor and/or the collector, but at the end of the day, allows the town full ability to control your billing process from start to finish yourself, okay? Once the assessing file is prepared, which is a lot of work that the assessors do, typically our clients can run their bills within an hour, okay? From that point, then, once it's moved into the billing side, of course, uh, the bills are created and processed, transactions are processed. And then there is a very powerful turnover. Actually, if I go back to the data bridge for a second too. The other huge thing about the data bridge is it allows the assessor at any time to push an owner, uh, an address mailing update file to the collection ledgers. So that way the files can always be synchronized electronically. You're not having anything slip through the cracks. That can be done at any point. Uh, it can be done multiple times during the year, typically before billing or a tax taking or something of that nature. Again, removing a tremendous amount of duplicate data entry. So the assessor's not entering all the information and handing it over to the collector to do the same. And then the really important, you know, um, integration bridge is the turnover piece from the collection ledgers to accounting. And there's really three different levels to that. The first would be receipts or payments, right? That's, that's the bulk of, of the transactions. But then it also allows electronic turnover of taxpayer refunds, okay? So we leverage, for example, with the motor vehicle excise data, the, the collector can turn over all approved motor vehicle excise, uh, taxpayer refunds directly into the accounts payable area for the accountant to then push the button and, and create the check. So literally creating 10 hundreds, thousands of taxpayer refunds within a matter of, 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 of minutes or even seconds. And that, that alone saves people, you know, tremendous amount of time and also leverages the registry data whereby on the check stub that will list out, you know, what car is, is being referenced. This is super handy, like if you have, you know, a leasing company in town or, or one company that owns multiple vehicles. Again, the collector's not getting all these calls about what car is this for and why am I getting this, right? The, the third piece is the journal entry turnover, which allows you to turn over all other transactions, whether it's commitments, transfers to tax title, all of your billings, okay, adjustments, okay, abatements. So literally you're able to turn over electronically all transaction types at these three different levels. Now, it's important to note, none of this happens magically, okay? It, it, it's done in a controlled manner. It, it, it's done in a controlled manner whereby, uh, users actively select what type of transactions they want to turn over. They review those transactions prior. It then gets turned, turned over from collector to the treasurer. The treasurer then reviews it, can make edits, again confirms everything is fine, matches it up with the deposit and turns it over to the accountant, who then the accountant has the final review and ensures that it's being posted to the proper account. So, so nothing, uh, Bradley is posted to your general ledger unless you post it. So we really have taken the, the job duties and, 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 and functions of the way Massachusetts is, is, is laid out. Um, you know, so that it works in this manner. I should also mention as well that these products were built specifically, as far as our go-to-market strategy, they built, they were built specifically for Massachusetts by Massachusetts, okay? We worked with assessors, collectors, treasurers, accountants, finance directors, administrators, uh, to build these applications. They are built specifically for this state. They're not deployed anywhere else. You're not getting just a uniform, uh, national application, which may not do, you know, every single thing that Massachusetts does. And I'm here to tell you folks, we do things differently, right? Being the Commonwealth that we are, okay? There's a lot of nuance to what we do. And especially when you start to get into things like delinquent real estate, tax taking, tax titles, okay? All, all of your, all of your tax liens, you know, you know, there's a lot of stuff, um, you know, that our applications can do and automate, which quite honestly is often forgotten, um, if, if, if it's a more nationally oriented, um, application. So also we are going to be rolling out as well, we do work with Unibank. I guess you guys use Unipay for online payments. Is that correct? Okay, well, that's fine. You can do that. We, we already interface with them as well. But by the end of this calendar year, we're going to be rolling out our own Vadar online payment, uh, uh, taxpayer portal. It's going to be publicly facing as well as privately facing. It's going to allow any constituent to go online and not only see if they paid something online, they're going to see their entire payment history regardless of payment type. So whether it was a mail-in payment, a check payment, an online payment, doesn't matter. So again, removing a bunch of phone calls that, you know, the taxpayers maybe making into the collector's office. They can look everything up right there, see their entire history, their outstanding balances and the like. Um, it's, it's going to have things like, of course, you can look at your bill online, you can pay your bill online, you can opt in to get emails. You can pay by phone, you can pay by text, right? You get a text message, hey Frank, your motor vehicle excise bill and the amount of 3127 is, is due. Would you like to pay? Reply yes, boom, done. So we're really, really excited about, um, offering that type of functionality as well. So I don't know, am I going to be able to, am I going to be able to share screens here, Ed? Can I do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, great. So, so, so let's see, let's see if I can pull this up now. Oh, here we go. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So again, didn't want to bore you with a long PowerPoint presentation. I know, I know we only have half an hour and I've already eaten through about 17 minutes, but I think I can get through the rest of it. I did want to show you this one slide though. I think it really, uh, very well demonstrates the type of integration that we've built here in Massachusetts with Massachusetts municipal users for Massachusetts. This is a typical town's current process. Now, it may not be exactly your process, but I'm sure some of this is, you know, you know, applicable to you. And that is. Uh, I'm sorry?
Pretty darn close, Frank.
Okay, well, and that's typical, again, when you're running, you know, disparate systems. So wherever you see green, that's data entry. That's duplicate data entry, right? So the assessor, uh, we already talked about mailing address updates, abatements exemptions, special assessments, collector re-entering that stuff, doing the bills, entering the payments, treasurer then re-entering, uh, receipts and then, um, you know, and, and refunds and then go over to the accountant who then manually re-enters all the different stuff. So that's, that's typical. So what we really enjoy when you talk about reducing duplicate data entry by 95% and facilitating reconciliation of cash and receivables, you basically go from this to this, okay? And that's then where the integration bridges, you know, whether it's the assessing data bridge or, or, or the, uh, the turnover, uh, automated turnover or remote receipts plays in, all that green turns to blue. But again, it's all passed along one step at a time for edit, for review, for confirmation, for approval. But I just thought that was a good, a good visual to, uh, to take a look at. Um, as far as reporting goes, so we have three different levels of reporting in the system. We have the first level, the stock reporting, and there's dozens and dozens of stock reports in there, uh, for, for the users to readily use and access. They're not creating those reports. Those reports get you about 95% of your daily, uh, requirements. Um, you can do many, many different filters and such, which I'll talk about. But the second level of reporting is the custom report builder, which allows you again, a user interface, um, to create reports. And we've addressed the state level reporting. We'll talk about that. And then the final, uh, level of reporting is an export database where you can actually export data and really create anything that you want. But we really have taken the approach, I mean, a lot of companies say, oh yeah, you can create any, you can create any report in our system. Well, yeah, but you have to create it, okay? It's not there ready for you to pick and use. But 95% of the stuff that our people do, they use our, our stock reports. So for example, if I look at this real, real quick, um, this is just a super, super simple, um, uh, expenditure ledger, budget to actual report that, for example, the selectman could run. These are all accounts, okay, your entire chart. But like I say, a remote department, they would only see their accounts, but su- super simple account number, name, what's allocated to be spent, right, budgeted, what's been expended, what's the ending balance and what's your percent variance, right? So they can just scan right down and say, oh, wait a minute, I'm 100% already. Oh, okay, well that, well that makes sense to me. Or wait a minute, I'm 39%, that doesn't make sense. And then, and then they have access, of course, to go through and, and find out, you know, you know, how or why. Um, kind of the next flavor of it. Okay, this is a great report. The departments don't tend to use this type of report, but the accountants do and the auditors love this. Again, can be filtered in many different ways. Um, and it all revolves around your account number structure. Um, you can do by department only. You can basically search, uh, and, and filter by any of your account segments. So this is a true UMS fund accounting system built specifically for Massachusetts. UMS is the Massachusetts, uh, you know, you know, uh, regulations for fund accounting promulgated by the Mass DOR and Division of Local Services. But this is really good because you can see what's been budgeted, what's been encumbered, any transfers, net transfers, uh, you know, to date. And that builds then to your allocated to be spent. So you see your breakdown and then any journal entries for the period, any receipts to the period, any payments for the period, your ending balance, again, your percent variance. So a really, really nifty, handy report that gives you a lot of information. Um, you can also set up reporting templates and save them. So if you do different filters, you don't have to keep recreating those filters each and every time. Um, this report right here, um, is, yeah, is one that's broken up by department, for example. So we see here, for example, it's broken up by department, selectmen, okay, you see all your different stuff. Again, you could do the simple report just with the three columns. You can then also, um, see what accounts the selectmen would be able to see, for example. Cash report, um, the whole power of this reporting, uh, system is built upon the UMS account number structure, which is comprised of a number of account segments and codes. And each of these codes means something, okay? And that's the real key here. Now, this, this, this reporting area allows you to filter not only by multiple codes in a given segment, but by multiple segments and multiple codes. So you can actually do a three-dimensional matrix depending upon the information you want to drill down on. So this is a very simple cash report that in one page gives you boom, all of your cash, not just your 1040s, but also your 1020s and anything else, right? The petty cash as well as all this stuff to reconcile to your bank accounts. Just real quick, we have integrated, uh, DLS and DOR state reporting. Um, you folks wouldn't really be interested in this, but I'm sure Bradley is. We have both the, the two-column DLS balance sheet and the four-column DLS balance sheet, which you have to submit for your free cash certification. Again, it is run within a matter of, of, of a few clicks, um, in a matter of seconds. Our clients tell us ad hoc wise, they can create pretty much any report they want in five clicks or less. Really big one here, Schedule A, okay? So within the custom report builder, we have built in all of the Schedule A worksheets, all right? I'm sure, I'm sure Bradley, you know, recognizes this. This is a huge report that each town in Massachusetts is required to complete at the end of the year. It can take people weeks or months of time to try to aggregate the data properly, the way DLS wants it aggregated. But here we've built the templates. You can assign different buckets, different accounts to different buckets. And if you maintain this thing within a matter, again, of a minute or two, you can run your entire Schedule A and plug it into the online portal. Um, department worksheet, another Schedule A. Okay, real quick here, for example, a town administrator, but we, we mocked up the data, but a town administrator used this for his town meeting warrant within the custom area. When you're doing reporting, you know, computers like when things are consistent, right? If, if, if there's two subtotals, it always wants two subtotals. But again, the flexibility here allows you to assign different levels within the same report. So for example, here, town meeting, you have two subtotals, finance committee, you have one subtotal, audit, you have none. So again, a lot of flexible reporting with everything at your fingertips. Budget, but full, uh, a full-fledged budgeting prep module. It allows you to create your budget collectively and dynamically online, all in one place. You're not managing several different spreadsheets that then get corrupted or somebody entered the wrong thing into the wrong sheet the night before you're redoing the whole thing. I can't tell you how long, how, how often I've heard that. So this, for example, is an initial budgetary request. I called your attention. You can not only, um, budget in aggregate, okay, but you can budget, you can budget in detail if you so desire. So for example, this admin assistant salary is budgeted in 12 equal installments, okay, for the, for the monthly salary. And advertising, maybe this is just for quarterly, okay? Uh, postage, maybe that's just three times a year. And once you have it budgeted in that manner, you can then create detailed budget to actual reports, okay? Which I'm sure Ed probably submits something similar to this to the select board, at least many town administrators do, which again, gives you this breakdown. So you can really do some nice projection and cash flow analytics, right? So especially something like, you know, snow plowing or something, you know, you don't see any of that expense hit until maybe here in December, January, February. But you see the tracking, you understand the dynamics of the situation. Then finally, once you create your budget, um, or you, well, you do your different levels. So, so for example, departmental request, FinCom, town admin approved, you roll each level over electronically. Then you then edit by exception. You can lock down the budget, uh, you know, you know, you know, the, the audit trail. And you can even have your remote departments enter in their initial request. So that way finance isn't doing all that work, um, themselves. And then finally, um, it's important to note as well that we do also allow you to budget your revenue also. So this client obviously is just looking at the big meat and potato receivables, but you can see they're budgeting their revenue and they're seeing how they're doing from a collection standpoint. Cool. Just want to make sure I got everything there. Gotcha. Um, real quick, implementation, uh, implementation, install and support. Um, as I mentioned, we've, we've already converted more than 20 Softwrite Springbrook accounts, more than 20 Point accounts. We know the data. Um, you folks need to be aware that at least Point QDS, they are going to charge you. Give you your data, okay? So that's, that's really important. That's a transition cost. You're going to have to keep in mind. Um, I don't know what they're charging now. Um, in the past, it was. In the past, it was, you know, significant.
Now, have you pulled any point customers over and integrated that so far, Frank?
I'm, I'm sorry, meaning, yeah, we've converted more than twenty point customers and then the last Yeah, yeah, we've, we've converted more than twenty soft right customers and more than twenty point customers. And many of them were like you, they're a point on tax and soft right on accounting.
Okay.
As far as your partners, I mentioned, we work with Vision, Art Jones is your deputy, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Yeah. So again, we, 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 we have, you know, many accounts with Art. We have the interfaces, all that stuff set up. In full transparency, I do just want to mention, in our experience, you know, these type of upgrades really are not necessarily are technically upgrades, they're full blown migrations, right? Because, you know, software, the software system, it's my understanding, it's going away, it's being replaced. So it would be a new system installation. And then obviously on the tax side, the point system is, is going away as well and Q D S is replacing that. So really regardless of which, which road you go, I just think it's important for you to, to consider that you are looking at a full blown migration regardless. At least that's been, been our experience. Timeframes, we tend to require at least four to six months for these type of things, okay? Especially when you're talking about all the components that you're taking. So typically, well, right now we're talking to several towns and typically we look to execute, you know, contingent agreements based upon funding by the end of the calendar year or early in January to, to kick off the installation. It's important to note that the same account managers and product specialists that install and train you also support you. Okay. So you have that continuity. You're not dealing with one install team and then a different customer service team. It's all the same folks. It works really well because at the end of the day, we're incentivized to do it right, do it once, do it on budget. And, and, and the folks know the history and the track record of your account. There's go live, there's, what we've quoted you as a block of go live training specifically for that, to go live. However, ongoing training resources are always available. We do weekly webinars, they're topical in nature, you know, around tax season, we do the data bridge webinar, you know, around, you know, you know, January or so. We do the ten ninety nine webinar. All clients are invited, we'll often have fifty, sixty, seventy towns on. They are recorded, they are archived in our library for future reference. We are also more than willing to set up, you know, our increment webinars individually with the town at no extra charge. And then, of course, we have the, the support process as well, people call in to support. And when you call in to support, you're calling into a dedicated account manager that's been assigned to your account. You're calling right into their desk. You have their direct line, you'll have my direct line, you have our direct emails. You're not calling a national call center, you're not getting a ticket number. Ninety five percent of support issues are dealt with immediately on the phone. If you can't get somebody on the phone, typically we warrant a call back within an hour during peak billing periods, maybe it's a little bit more. But, but you're not re-explaining yourself, right, to five different people, okay? You're talking to somebody that knows you, knows who, who you are, knows where Southampton is, knows, knows that Southampton's in Massachusetts, okay? And ultimately, you know, you know, understands the track record of your accounts. Obviously, we have the internet based support, the phone support, you'd be on our cloud, we have the webinars, user groups, we have annual user groups as well. We typically do at least a couple, one in the central part of the state to kind of cover, you know, Western and Central Mass. And then one down typically near Cape Cod and Plymouth to, to deal with the, with the, with the Cape accounts. Finally, did just want to mention again about our cloud infrastructure. We've been doing cloud computing just as long as anybody. We started back in twenty twelve and at that time, we outsourced the environment to somebody else. So they owned it, they managed it, you know, similar to what people do with Amazon Web Services. Didn't work all that well for a whole, whole host of reasons. So back in twenty sixteen, we spent over half a million dollars and we built our own cloud infrastructure. We own it, we service it, we maintain it. It's a private cloud, okay? It's not a publicly accessible cloud. Our servers are housed at the Tier Point Data Center in Marlboro, Massachusetts, which is a very large data center chain. That's where Verizon, A T and T, DirecTV, Comcast, et cetera. It's basically one of the major internet nodes here in the Northeast, okay? It's a, it's a two hundred thousand square foot facility. There's an iris scanner to get in. I, I actually, Frank got to have his Star Trek fantasy the first time I went there. I had to have my, my iris scan and the door actually opened and it actually let me in. So i- it's built to withstand attacks by both human and nature, okay? The cloud itself, it's built for our stuff. Specifically, it's the Vadar superhighway. It gives you twenty four seven, three sixty five remote access from any device, from any internet connection, whether it's from work, from home or on the go. We cover all the, the server licensing. It comes with daily data backups. We back up your stuff every two hours, okay? So it's six to eight times a day, we're backing up your stuff. If there's any type of failure or fallback, typically, you know, depending upon when it happens, if your internet connection went out or what have you, you know, we roll you back. But, but, but the, but the furthest you go back in time is two hours. We then collapse the image at the end of the day, restore that entire day on the servers there. It's RAID, RAID mirrored, and then it's also sent to another data center across the country. And then we also have disaster recovery virtual device as well, the repli bit device, which basically in the event the data center itself were to be destroyed. And honestly, if that thing gets destroyed, probably everything else has gone down here too. But in that event, we can basically spin up another virtual environment and have everybody back up within twenty four hours. So I've gone a few minutes over, but there was obviously a lot of stuff to cover. If you have the time and more than willing to entertain any, any questions or, or comments, but hopefully I, I touched on the areas that you're, were of interest in, meaning for you.
Good. No, thank you, Frank. That, that was a great presentation and definitely covered at least three of my five questions right here. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty good. Let me open it up to other select board members and folks either raise your hand or something. I can't see everybody on the screen. So we have everybody here, Stephen's joined us now. So we have Stephen, Joy, John and Dan. If anybody has any questions, feel free to raise your hand or, or not.
Or shout out.
Or shout out, whatever's good. All right. Certainly Bradley and Jen as well. I know you've had the presentation before, but if there's something else that you wanted to just re-verify based on your jobs and how this will impact you, I think now's the time. So feel free to chime in. Let me just say one thing. I mean, I think two of my questions were really about how this software would basically enhance both the treasurer and accountant's time, you know, in terms of using this software and how, how and what kinds of manual transition, transactions would be reduced. And I think your, your couple of slides on that were absolutely crystal clear. So that was great. And then I think on, on reporting possibilities, that's one where I think the, the flexibility and the customizing part of it is something that I know, I think I at least would be very interested in. I think we've been feeling a little bit limited with just our usual, you know, revenue and expense reports. And sometimes there, you know, one is out of sync with another. Our revenue is not always on the same schedule. And so it's like, well, wait a minute, we look like we've, you know, just spent a ton of money and the revenue side is showing a little bit less there. So we get a bit nervous. So to be able to sort of dig into that with a bit more granularity is probably something I think some of us would appreciate. And then, yeah, in terms of migrating, I, I think I understood four to six months. And it sounded like doing this like in the middle of a fiscal year is not a problem for you or?
Well, okay, that's an excellent question. And then I did just want to talk briefly about the chart of accounts if, if you do have time, because that's critical as well. So we, we typically, we typically install for, for July first. You know, that's the cleanest, easiest, best way to do it at the beginning of the fiscal year. And segueing to the chart side of it, which I neglected, but I, you know, I'm, I'm sorry, just because I know we're running out of time. One of the big things that we do, okay, that a lot of other companies do not do, all right, is, and that's part of what you've been quoted, is we will review and optimize your chart of accounts for the Vadar system. Okay. You can't just take a soft right chart and slam it into Vadar or a Munis chart and slam it into Vadar and expect it to work because it will not, okay? Charts have shelf lives, as you know. Oftentimes if there's been turnover, you know, very often the chart can get a little muddied a little bit because there's a lot of interpretation that goes along with this stuff. And maybe somebody's posting or, or has a concept of doing it this way and somebody else is doing it another way. Oftentimes the charts are lacking in UMS code consistency. Because again, as people build the different accounts, we see so often the special revenue funds especially, okay? You know, you know, can be a big challenge, posting the fund balance, which really typically is a no-no sometimes is happening as well. The auditor's frowned upon that. So what we do really out of the gate, and that's why we also like to have the four to six months, is we will analyze your chart, okay? Now, I don't know if you know the name Mark Abrahams? Is that name? Okay. Mark, Mark Abrahams is a C P A consultant here in the Massachusetts industry. He's been around for, gosh, thirty five, forty years. Mark Abrahams wrote the, the UMS manual for D O R, okay? He wrote it. It's his brainchild. You know, he is their go-to guy with everything UMS fund accounting. And he is our go-to guy. He works with us as part of the installations. And so Mark and Ted and Bradley, you would all be looking at the chart, you know, Bradley could tell us especially, you know, where are the pitfalls? You know, where is it falling short? Because again, by having that UMS code consistency, by having the, the fund consistency and setting up properly, that's what drives all your backend reporting, especially the Schedule A reporting and the, and the, and the, and the balance sheet reporting. But then also your reporting as well for the selectmen as well, at, at what level you budget, at what level you need to have access to that information. Because then literally, and I know I didn't actually demo the interface, I mean, we could show that to you in a private Vadar Zoom room if you're interested. But yes, by having the ability, if you're coded properly, to report at all different levels, right? And the, and the way, for example, I, I explain it to people and we can present it, it's, it's a really powerful thing, but I think, I think you guys will get it. You, for example, can run a detailed general ledger. Every single transaction in the system, okay, is captured and it's going to be about three thousand pages, okay? Or you can simply change the filter by clicking on two or three different buttons and you can compress that entire three thousand page report into one condensed page. And then you can do anything in between, right? If you're coded properly. And most towns are not, it's just the nature of things, you know, there's no judgment here. But that's why when you're changing financial E R P systems, the time is ripe, right? To revisit your chart, I mean, sometimes it's a whole revamp a hundred percent. Sometimes maybe it's only five or 10%, but it's that five or 10% that's holding you back, holding you back for certain things like reconciliation and drill down reporting. So, so that's a huge piece of what we do with the installation and I apologize, I forgot to mention it, but I'm glad you, I'm glad you mentioned the reporting, which dropped.
John, I think I saw your hand somewhere.
I, I did, but it just got answered, so I'm good. And then just for, for the reference, Chris, I mean, I, I like everything I've seen here. And, and he answered all the questions that I was going to ask anyways about the backup redundancy. So I'm good.
Yes. Okay. Great.
Great.
Anyone, anyone else? Doug, were you going to say something? I saw your face pop up a minute.
No, I'm just here to listen. For support.
Perfect. Yeah.
Thank you.
Dan or anybody? Dan, Stephen, anything?
Great. You guys have been great. I really appreciate your time. You know, we don't often get to speak to select boards. I mean, sometimes we do, but, but the fact that you've taken the time and I mean, again, I applaud Ed for sitting through six hours of demonstrations, you know, a lot of town administrators don't do that. But guess what? When that happens, you know, it gives us a, a comfort level to, you know, that the interest is there and the investment in a political consensus, which is so very, very important. So again, gratitude to you all. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, that's, that's great. Maybe one final one. Is there, I mean, given the modules that are already existing, I, I can't think of what the future might look like, but you know, things always happen. So is, what's the level of potential, I guess, for expansion of, of modules? I mean, being able to add on something that we can't even think that we might need right now.
Yeah, that's a great question. So, so right out of the gate, again, that online payment portal is a huge thing, right? Because basically what happens right now is, for example, if you use Unipay or you use Invoice Cloud or City Hall Systems, right? When you go online, well, first of all, you have to opt in, right? You have to, you have to build, you have to sign up, right, to do it, okay? So if I'm not signed up, I can't see my stuff, all right? So by having the ability that this public facing element, that anybody can go on and see their stuff that's publicly available to be seen, obviously, okay? Is huge, okay? Number two, with these online payment providers, most of the time, the only payments you can see that you've made are if you've made it online in their system, right? So, so maybe I did one online payment, but maybe I paid by check three other times. Well, if I go to the, if I go to their portal, I only see my one online payment. And then I'm calling up the collector saying, but wait a minute, I made three other payments. Yes, yes, Mr. Natali, you did, but the only payments that show up are the ones you made online. Oh, you know, it's confusing to people. So by having this full audit trail of being able to see your entire audit history regardless of, of payment type or transaction type, that's huge, right? So, so just right out of the gate, we're super excited about that piece. That's going to be a big, big thing for people moving forward. But again, it's not forced on you. If you want to keep Unipay, that's fine, that's fine. We already interface with them. But if you want the full enchilada that I just spoke about, well, you would come to the Vadar solution, okay? As it relates to, I mean, we're really, we're really the financial guys. I mean, people have asked us, well, have you ever thought about doing, you know, you know, permitting software or, you know, licensing software? And just, just, there's no plan for that. I'll just be very honest. I mean, we are purely, we're the financial guys, that, you know, you know, that's what we live, eat and breathe. However, over and above that, we are currently working on our next generation platform. It's been in development for the past eighteen to twenty four months. We have the utility billing suite brought online and we're working on the tax and the accounting to fold those in. So over the next, you know, couple of years, you know, year to two or so, we're hoping to be able to roll that, roll that, roll that out as well. So, you know, we have a staff of developers, we have eight to 10 developers on staff. You know, we have seven to eight product people, you know, unlike a lot of these other companies, you know, I don't have, you know, I don't have eighty percent salespeople and twenty percent product people. We're reversed. I have eighty percent product people. And actually, well, I have one full-time salesperson. That's why he's on the phone. So, so it's just, just look, folks, that's the way we're built, that's the, the way we're structured. You know, we're here to support our growth and to support our clients. I mean, I'm very proud to say I've had clients with me or with us for twenty five plus years, you know? And, and like I say, over the last, you know, five years, we've brought on sixty more. So I have clients that have just started with us or clients that have been with us two years, ten years, fifteen years, twenty five years. And, and, and it's really because of people like you, our clients, and the way we've built, you know, you told us what to do with the applications and we tried to do it, so.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing anybody out there with other questions. And like I say, you really covered my, my set of questions in your presentation. So thank you for being so thorough and very explanatory and really hit all the points that I had in mind. So with that, I think we'll say thank you for joining us and spending your time, both Frank and Doug. Much appreciated.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to all. Take care now.
Take care. Where we go.
You too. Bye bye.
Okay. So I think that ends our meeting for today. We have no other agenda items. So I think, Select Board folks, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, first, before I offer such a motion, my apologies for arriving late. I kept trying to load the meeting and this blue circle went around and around. I haven't used this machine in a month. And so again, my apologies. So we've heard from both of the
Yeah, it's been So you, you can go back and listen to it, Stephen.
Certainly. Well, I just wanted to offer my apologies as we sign off. Move adjourn.
All right. A motion to adjourn. Stephen, second. Dan?
Second.
Second.
So, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, we need a roll call, both our, roll calls.
Lumber, aye.
Jonathan? Stephen?
Aye. Johnson, aye.
Johnson, aye. Joy, are you still there? Okay, Paul's aye. Okay, we are adjourned to three thirty.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.